Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity to call this public hearing of the Columbus City Council's zoning committee to order. Good evening. Thank you all for being here tonight for this committee hearing to examine council zoning process and procedures. First, I want to thank my colleagues that are here this evening. Council President Harden, Councilmember Bangston, Councilmember Faver, Councilmember Remy. I wanted to pause and allow them to make any introductory remarks that they'd like. Seeing vigorous head shaking, I will move on, but thank you to my colleagues for being here. Second, I want to thank those who are giving presentations tonight. Planning Manager Shannon Pine from Building and Zoning Services. From the City Attorney's Office, we have Chief Counsel Laura Baker-Morish from the Kerwin Institute for the Study of Race and Ethnicity at the Ohio State University, Senior Researcher Glenn Sweeney, and the Assistant Director for Growth Policy at the Department of Economic Development, Kevin Wheeler. Thank you all for being here tonight and appreciate you being part of this very important conversation that we're having. I also want to thank council staff for their work tonight preparing for this hearing, certainly including Senior Policy Advisor Andrew Dyer from the Legislative Research Office, who works with council, and all the members on zoning issues, City Clerk Angie Blevins, her team, James Lewis, Twaya Johnson, and Jacob Dilly, Mark Carter from the Department of Technology, CTV, and certainly my staff, Annie McDonald and Kevin McCain, for all their work in getting us here tonight. Finally, I also want to thank members of the public who have joined us here in chambers and virtually. I know many area commissioners have taken time out to be with us tonight, and I want to thank them especially, given the important work that they do in our community every single day. They volunteer their time and attention to make sure that this body can do our important work. At the front end, I want to acknowledge, holding a public hearing for a zoning committee is pretty unusual. In my time in council, I don't think we've ever done this before. Zoning and variance applications come before council every Monday night, and that's typically when this committee hears things related to our work. Yet, outside of those meetings on Monday nights, we as a body rarely discuss this topic holistically. However, we know that land use policy is one of the most foundational aspects of the future of our city. The decisions that this council makes regarding land use shapes the very nature of how our city will grow. Nearly every single year, council receives a record number of requests for rezonings variances. You gotta ask the question, why is this? Well fundamentally, there are two reasons. First, we have a zoning code that is decades old. When city planners made determinations on what would be appropriate to build on every parcel of property in the city, that happened when Columbus' population was about half of what it is today. How we build transportation systems was completely different. Public infrastructure, different. Types of housing stock, different. There is little public policy from the 1950s that remains the same today, and our zoning code is no different. It's a relic of this era. When we're trying to apply the modern world to something this old, you're going to need to make some changes, and we see this every single week at council when we get requests for rezoning or variance. We also need to consider the economic and racial biases that are baked into any public policy from the middle of the last century. It's easy to see how decisions from decades ago manifest themselves in both racial and economic segregation in too many of our neighborhoods. Again, that's why I'm pleased to have Glenn Sweeney from the Kerwin Institute here tonight to speak more about this topic. The second reason why council receives so many applications before the zoning committee is that Columbus is growing. As I mentioned, our population has more than doubled since the last time we had major changes to our zoning code. Applications are rising to meet this growth by proposing new housing, new employment centers, new small businesses, and everything that will help the city raise the capacity for having new neighbors in our community. This growth is reflecting the number of applications across the city where modifications to our zoning code need to be required. As we're here tonight, the city has undertaken steps to modernize their zoning code, and I'm extremely hopeful that these efforts will help us grow in a more equitable and thoughtful way in the future. However, we also know that comprehensive rewrite is still a significant time away from happening. Thus, we have to work with what is in front of us today to help manage the number of applications that come before council. When I took over as Chair of this committee, one of my top priorities was to help council be more transparent with the community about the decisions that we make involving rezonings and variances. I recognize that some of these decisions are controversial. Change is never easy, and when it's change in your neighborhood, that makes it even more difficult for many. However, we know that Columbus is going to continue to grow, which means change is inevitable. How council works with our area commissions, our residents, city departments, applicants, and the public on this topic is important to help set the terms for how we deal with this change and this growth. That is ultimately why we're here tonight. Folks in this community may not support every change in their neighborhood, but council's zoning process should be transparent, and the community shouldn't guess at how we're evaluating applications that come before us. That is my goal to clarify that here tonight. This hearing is available to livestream on CTV, council's Facebook page and YouTube page, and broadcast on Spectrum, Channel 1024, Channel 3 on AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. The video will also be posted on the City Columbus YouTube channel following this event. And with that, I hope we've sort of set why we're here tonight for a very unusual zoning meeting on a Wednesday, not a Monday. But with that, I'd love to turn the floor over to Planning Manager Shannon Pine from Building and Zoning Services for her presentation on zoning variance basics. Shannon, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Pine. I'm the manager in the zoning office of the Department of Building and Zoning Services, and I manage the Council Activities section, which oversees the rezoning and council variance processes. Before we delve into these application processes, I thought it would be worthwhile to briefly explain what zoning is. Zoning regulates the types of land uses permitted on a property, provides guidelines for setbacks, height, lot sizes, lot coverage, parking, and other requirements, and there are 41 zoning districts in the city of Columbus. Zoning is used as a tool to protect the public's health, welfare, and safety, to separate conflicting land uses. It's a tool to implement community planning goals. It makes land use patterns predictable, and it regulates uses to achieve public benefits. There are many items that zoning also does not regulate, such as the sale of alcohol, deed restrictions, owner-occupied units, or stormwater management, to name a few. There are several types of zoning relief handled by the zoning office. The Board of Zoning Adjustment considers requests for variances to development standards. They consider requests for special permits for certain uses, such as salvage yards and animal kennels, and they consider appeals to zoning code violations. The Graphics Commission is a counterpart to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, handling signage variances. There is no city council involvement in either of these public hearing processes. The Council Activities section, as I stated, handles rezoning, which changes the zoning district that is assigned to a property, and that process takes about three to four months. The council variance, it permits a use that is not permitted by the underlying zoning district, or it permits a variation in the development standards in conjunction with a rezoning or a use variance. That process takes about two to three months. City Council is the final approval body for both rezoning and council variance applications, thus our section name, "Council Activities." The beginning of the rezoning process, the application submits an application via email. Generally, the fourth Tuesday of the month is our monthly cutoff date. The application is processed, maps are made, and then we prepare the PDF file to be emailed to the neighborhood group, and then the application is also posted on our Citizens' Access Portal. This is usually about a week after we receive the application. We conduct an internal staff review meeting. Those are held on the third Thursdays of the month, about three weeks after the application is filed. That application is distributed a week before that meeting to various city agencies for their review and comment, and the internal meeting is held, and the comments are input into the Citizens' Access Portal. We generate a staff review results letter based on those comments from the city review agencies, and we email that to the applicants, and then we also post it on the Citizens' Access Portal. The ball is back in the applicant's court at that point, and the applicant will negotiate with city review agencies based upon those staff review comments. During this staff review and comment process, the applicant should be in contact with the neighborhood group and get scheduled for consideration, however their meeting process works. The neighborhood group will be making a recommendation based on what's the best fit for their neighborhood, and will -- this is the first point where residents can give their feedback and raise concerns about a zoning proposal. The city and the neighborhood group are viewing the application through different filters, so on occasion, the recommendations from those groups may be different. The application generally will not move forward to the zoning public hearing until the city department's review is complete and until the neighborhood group has made their recommendation. The city department's recommendation will most likely be for disapproval if one agency does not support the request. The Development Commission agenda is finalized, and notices are mailed 14 days before the scheduled meeting to property owners within 125 feet of the subject site. The staff report summarizes the features of the rezoning request and includes city review agency feedback. The neighborhood group recommendation is included in the staff report if it is provided before the report publishing date, and staff reports are published on the Citizens' Access Portal one week before the scheduled meeting, and then the Development Commission meetings occur on the second Thursday of the month at 4:30 PM in the public hearing room at 111 North Front Street. During the Development Commission meeting, the staff report outlining the city department's recommendation is presented. The applicant provides testimony regarding the request. The neighborhood group may also testify regarding the application and explain their recommendation. Opponents and proponents may make presentations and generally follow city council speaking roles. Any correspondence received prior to the meeting is shared with the Development Commission members in advance of the meeting. The Development Commission considers the city department's recommendation, the neighborhood group recommendation, and speakers' comments when deliberating and formulating their recommendation. A results letter is issued to the applicant and lists what is needed for our final ordinance preparation, and this is another point in the process where the ball is back in the applicant's court. We are waiting for them to provide us information, and we also post those result letters on the Citizens' Access Portal. When we receive those final materials, the ordinance is prepared and submitted to city council 17 days prior to the earliest possible council meeting, and the ordinance does contain all three recommendations, the city department's, the neighborhood group, and the Development Commission. And it's important to point out that a recommendation for disapproval from any of these entities does not stop the process. The city council public meeting, I know Councilmember Dorans will go into more detail on this part, but it is out of the hands of my staff at this point. The City Council Zoning Chair decides when those ordinances will be scheduled on a council zoning meeting. The same notification process is followed for notices to be sent for the meeting to owners within 125 feet and the applicable neighborhood group, and once the ordinance goes into effect, the new zoning district is reflected on the zoning map. I'll briefly overview the council variance process. Council variance, as I stated, they permit a use that is not permitted by the zoning district. It does not rezone the property. The zoning district stays the same. It permits a variation in the development standards of any district when, in conjunction with a rezoning or a use variance. I know many area commissions and city council have seen a big influx of concurrent council variances that are submitted at the same time that a rezoning ordinance is submitted to vary a height or setback requirement. The recommendations that are needed for this process is a city department's recommendation and a neighborhood group recommendation. It follows the same exact process as rezoning requests. The only difference is that city council variances do not get consideration by the Development Commission, so they are not scheduled for that public hearing. The final approval or disapproval is decided by city council. I thought it would be a good idea to just highlight some resources so that the public could find out more about zoning and how to be involved in the zoning process. This is the index of zoning districts. This form can be found on our department webpage under our Documents page. It just gives a really brief list of all of the zoning districts that we have and generally what they permit. So the public might be wondering, how can you find out information about active applications in your neighborhood? You can utilize the zoning map. You can enter your address in the property search field, and if you live in an area commission area, it will be listed. This example site is in Clintonville, and the Clintonville Area Commission name is listed on the map. By enabling different layers on the zoning map, you can see if there are any active pending applications, and those are denoted either by a striping or a diagonal hatching. And you can click on the site to obtain more information about that application through the Citizens' Access Portal. And this is two screenshots of what you will see when you go to the Citizens' Access Portal. From this portal, you can obtain the project description, the status, the city department's comments, and copies of the application results letter and revised materials, if applicable. Just to go back, for completed zoning districts and variances, they will not link you to the Citizens' Access Portal. They will link you to the city council ordinance page, the Legistar Citizens' Access Portal. And then, another way to be involved is to get involved with your area commission. You can use the area commission map from the Columbus Area Commission webpage. You can enter your address, and it should list which area commission you're in, and then there are links to those area commissions and their agendas and other valuable information about your neighborhood. If you don't reside within an area commission, there may be a large civic association that you reside within. There's roughly eight civic associations in the city of Columbus, and they act in a similar capacity as the area commissions, and you can use the one map by the Department of Neighborhoods to find out if you're in a civic association. This example has Northwest, and there's a Northwest Civic Association. Finally, to monitor some of the zoning requests that are coming before the Development Commission, you can go to my department's Development Commission webpage and link to either pending or past agendas to find the results of those meetings and those applications. And I've included resources for all of the webpages that I covered here this evening, and I have some general contact information. And if you have any questions regarding a specific application, it's always best to contact the assigned planner. If you do not know who an application is assigned to or have a general question, it's best to email zoninginfo@columbus.gov or call our general zoning information line. I want to thank you for your time this evening. The area commissioners, development commissioners, and city council members appreciate community feedback during the zoning process. Citizen involvement results in better site design and more vibrant neighborhoods, and I'm available to answer any questions if time allows. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon, and I want to thank you and your team for the monumental task that you do literally every single week with council. When we talk about there being record numbers of applications, that is one thing in front of the body on a Monday night. That's a very different thing for you all to be working every single day to sort of process those things and keep lots of different balls in the air as things make their way through the process. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for Shannon? So you know, I also want to acknowledge President and Pro Tem Elizabeth Brown has joined us virtually, so thank you for being here tonight. And I also know we have a number of students from Denison University who actually have joined us here tonight, who are currently enrolled in the class on housing. We're going to actually get to part of the presentation that sort of focuses on the relation between housing and zoning. With that, I will actually get to Chief Counsel in the City Attorney's Office, Laura Baker-Morish, who will present about differences between council variance and rezoning applications from a legal standpoint. One of the things that, when I took over this committee as an attorney, I felt it was very important for this body to approach rezonings and variances in a little bit of a different way because of the way that our codes are structured and the way that Ohio law relates those two things. And Laura Baker-Morish has been intimately involved with council in making sure that we're sort of approaching those things in a correct way from a legal standpoint. And when you sit before council on a Monday night and you hear a rezoning versus a variance, sometimes it doesn't seem like there's any difference between the two of them, but there is, and that's why I wanted to have Chief Counsel here with us tonight to talk a little bit about that with the community, about the differences between those two things. So with that, Laura, I'd love to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Chair Dorans, and thank you, other members of council. I'm here this evening to give you kind of the 30,000-foot view of the distinction and difference between rezoning and a request for a zoning variance. There are a lot of legal intricacies involved in how one goes about granting these requests, but I don't want to get into all of that this evening, so I'd rather give you kind of an overview of how they fit into two different buckets. So the easiest way to think about a rezoning is, as Shannon was able to go through and discuss how her department goes through a rezoning request, is that zoning is essentially a legislative act. It is a determination by the legislative authority, in this case, the city council, about how the different areas of the city, for planning purposes, are going to have different requirements as to what kinds of buildings and what uses of those buildings and what sizes of buildings and how they're going to be set back, and it's a plan for the entire city of Columbus, and it's a layout of how those different zoning areas are going to interact with one another and what the requirements are going to be for how those areas are used. So at bottom, rezoning is a legislative act, no different than any other act of council. You can consider public input. You would consider about how it impacts the city generally, and while rezoning can have an individual component, in the sense that you have an individual applicant who owns a particular piece of property or that wants to develop a particular piece of property coming before you to advocate that the city general map be changed in a specific way as relates to their property, in the end, the determination is still a legislative act. Is this something that makes sense for the city as a whole? Are we going to authorize and approve this particular request such that the zoning map will then become changed, and that will now become the new general standard going forward? A variance is different. A variance, the general law itself does not change, and I believe that that was already alluded to earlier. In a variance request, there is still a general provision of the city code that requires that a particular property or a particular landscaping or a particular height setback, whatever you want it to be, still applies to that particular area that's zoned in that particular way. But the applicant has come forward and said, hey, I understand there's this general law, but as applied to my property, that particular law doesn't make sense, and I'm encountering practical difficulties in using my land for its intended use. And so you might have an individual who says, okay, it makes sense that all residential houses have to be set back X number of feet, and that makes sense for the city as a whole, but for my property, because my property is irregularly shaped, if I were to have that same standard requirement applied to my property, it would make my property almost unusable. So that's the kind of requests that you're going to see when you're talking about a variance instead of talking about a rezoning. And the reason that that makes a difference from a legal perspective is that because rezoning, as I said, is generally a legislative act, it can be treated much like council treats any other ordinance that comes before it, whereas a variance request is very much specific to the particular applicant that is before you. A variance request is a specific ask that that individual be allowed to have a different set of rules applied just to that property. And so as such, when council hears a request for a variance, it's not performing a legislative function. When council hears a request for variance, it's performing what we call a quasi-adjudicatory function. Simple way of saying is you're acting basically as a judge. You're making a determination as to whether or not this particular applicant has met certain criteria, and if they have met that criteria, then you're going to say, okay, you have demonstrated that you are in fact experiencing these practical difficulties, and therefore we're going to grant your request. So that's the 30,000-foot view. When we're talking about the criteria that I just mentioned, so there was a Supreme Court decision, there always is. There was a Supreme Court decision back in 1986, Duncan versus Middlefield, issued by the Ohio Supreme Court, and it laid out seven general standards that are supposed to be considered when you're making a determination as to whether or not there's a practical difficulty. Now, I wouldn't be a lawyer if I didn't also say there are other provisions that can be considered. Our city code has other specific requirements and specific terms being used, but generally speaking, practical difficulties and these considerations are what has been incorporated into our city code, and it's the kind of thing that staff is looking at when they're trying to make a determination as to whether someone who's requesting a variance has met the criteria within the city code. So when staff is reviewing a request, they're considering the provisions of city code, which are, as I said, generally based upon this decision out of the Ohio Supreme Court, and they're considering, of course, as Shannon has already mentioned, citywide planning ideas, I'm losing the word, guidelines, that's the word, city planning guidelines, and how those help to inform and interpret the criteria. So the seven Duncan criterias, criteria, the seven Duncan criteria are whether the property in question will yield a reasonable return, or whether there can be any beneficial use of the property without the variance, whether the variance is substantial, whether the essential character of the neighborhood would be substantially altered, or whether adjoining properties would suffer a substantial detriment as a result of the variance, whether the variance would adversely affect the delivery of governmental services, whether the property owner purchased the property with knowledge of the zoning restriction, and whether the property owner's predicament feasibly can be obviated through some method other than a variance, or whether the spirit and intent behind the zoning requirement would be observed and substantial justice done by granting the variance. Again, those are the general principles that guide the city code criteria that needs to be ultimately evaluated in determining whether or not a variance is granted. So when you're thinking about hearing a request for variance, the audience as to who might be impacted by that request is different than it is for a legislative act. When you're thinking about a rezoning, which again is changing the zoning map, then any individual who is a citizen of the city of Columbus might want to come down and voice their opinion, just as they do for any other ordinance that council might hear. When you're talking about a request for a variance, the individual who's making that request has a due process right. They have the right to notice. They have a right to an opportunity to be heard, and any individual who might, as we just went through the criteria, who might be impacted by that change in variance, also has a due process right to notice and an opportunity to be heard. That's the reason why we issue notice to individual property owners that are within, I think it's 125 feet of the applicant's parcel. It's because those individuals may well be within the realm of the kinds of properties that might be impacted by the variance request. And it's important when you're thinking about that opportunity to be heard, it's about not whether or not those individuals like or dislike the particular plan that's being brought forth. The question is whether or not the request for a variance, if granted, would result in an economic detrimental decision pertaining to their use of their particular parcel of land. So again, for a variance, it's more like a hearing in court, okay? And for a rezoning, it is just like every other legislative act of council, and so as a result, there might be different rules that have to apply in terms of how council hears those different requests. So that's the 30,000-foot. There are, of course, exceptions, but that's the general rule.
Thank you, Chief Counsel. I appreciate whatever foot view you gave us, and also want to acknowledge the work that you have done to help us with this process here today. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for Chief Counsel? Councilmember Faver?
Thank you, Ms. Baker-Morish, for that great 100,000- Thank you, Ms. Baker Morris, for that great 100,000 view, I don't know what number we're on right now. I remember, or I recall in the past, I think we might have had a pilot program around how we issue notice. There has been mailers that have gone out to residents. I think we thought or considered a sign that would be placed in the yard. So, what is acceptable notice for the city of Columbus?
So, acceptable notice would be providing notice to those landowners that are likely to be potentially impacted. So, of course, it's going to be different depending on the project. If you have an individual who owns a single-family home and they want, you know, their driveway to be wider than it was, and again, I'm just picking random thoughts, that might have an impact, potentially, on the homes that are in the immediate vicinity of that particular driveway, versus if you have a development that's going to take over two to three city blocks and they're planning on using it, you know, for a rock and roll stadium, the impact might be a little bit farther beyond that. I think by using the 125-foot, the city council is making a reasonable determination that individual properties within that are likely to be in the group of individuals, but certainly if somebody was just outside of that and learned about it and could articulate how that particular request might negatively impact them, and that's going to be depending upon the request, certainly they would have also the opportunity to then speak on that. But I think it's important to note that it's not just about, again, and you'll sometimes see these during the hearings, there are some requests for variances that involve, for instance, a variance in the amount of parking spaces. There certainly could be an impact over an entire neighborhood on whether or not there are a particular allotment for parking spaces, but that's not the kind of impact that we're talking about here. The question is whether or not that particular request might have an economic impact on their own use of their property or their land, not just on whether or not it might create a collateral inconvenience related to traffic, as an example.
And so, is that, that decision, that economic impact, is that a decision that is being weighed by the folks who come before us every Monday at 6:30?
I don't know, because I haven't asked them, but it's something that certainly we have, I've been talking about with Councilmember Dorans in terms of trying to figure out going forward how to make sure that individuals that believe that they fall into that category have access so that they can present their concerns in the event that they feel that they have been negatively or potentially negatively impacted.
Thank you. Just as I think about how we're leaning into revamping our zoning code, notice and the opportunity to be heard, one of the things that we hear all the time from folks who learn about zoning variances at the last minute, is that they didn't know, and they didn't have an opportunity to speak to anyone. And so, the first time that they're speaking out loud is when they come before this body. And so, and if we can improve upon those processes, streamline that, make it even clearer, I know in some cities, there's a sign that's in the yard that says that this property is currently being rezoned, or it's variance, or what have you, or whatever creative way we can do to make sure that folks in their busy lives know that something is happening with this piece of property, I think that only helps to improve the engagement, community engagement process overall.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Dorans.
Any other colleagues for Chief Counsel? Council President Harden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a city attorney, when you, when we are bifurcating the differences between the zoning, a rezoning, and a variance, and we're talking about the quasi-adjudiciary nature of the variance, does that have any impact on folks who may have issue with, and want to challenge us in court outside of this body? Does that have bearing over?
Yes. Generally speaking, generally speaking, again, because it's the law, there are always exceptions, but generally speaking, a rezoning, there's no right of appeal for an individual. It's a legislative act. So, absent some specific, really out-there kind of activity that occurred that I can't even think of right now in a hypothetical, generally speaking, rezonings are not subject to appeal. Variances are. And so, when we're talking about the right to notice and an opportunity to be heard, we're also talking about creating a record of what happened here. We're talking about having individuals have an opportunity to present information if necessary, because when I say that there's a right to an appeal, there's a provision under the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 2506 of the Revised Code, that would allow for an appeal to the Court of Common Pleas in the event that they believe that they have been denied a substantive right and/or if they believe that the criteria was improperly evaluated or that the decision was without support. So, some of the conversations I've been having with Councilmember Dorans, there's a lot of work, as Shannon Pine already described, that happens prior to the point of getting to a council request for variance. And so, that's a little bit different than it would be maybe for the BZI or the Graphics Commission, who are often the first place where that variance request is heard. By the time it's getting to you, it's been through some levels, and the staff has put together quite a packet of information pertaining to findings that they have made, about factual findings about what this property is like and how the variance might impact that particular property or other properties, and they're providing that to you as it moves from the department to council. So, part of the conversation we've been having is about making sure that that information that you've received is reflected in our record, so that if it is appealed, we can show the court down the line, yes, that's what council considered when they made their decision.
Thank you, Council President. I did want to pause on this topic that Councilmember Favor brought up. So, Councilmember Remy had actually worked on the pilot program that she was describing about the sign notification. That's actually something that we're working to move beyond a pilot, I think to Councilmember Favor's point, whether it's a rezoning or a variance. More notice is better, right? And I think Chief Counsel probably would agree with that. So, I think we're looking at ways in which we can be more proactive on that front, and something we've also discussed with the Department of Building and Zoning Services is ways for the public sort of to sign up to make sure that they're getting notification electronically when there's something that's being filed within their neighborhood, however that's defined. Because again, I think to Councilmember Favor's point, it is quite regular that we get someone who comes down to council when we feel like, you know, every box has been checked, but unfortunately, you know, they just found out about it that day. And there's, you know, as we're going to talk about a number of times here this evening is that we need to try to make sure all of our processes are transparent with the public so that we're being very clear with how we're making decisions and why. And, you know, if folks feel like, you know, that's not happening, we need to do everything on our part to try and do our best to meet those expectations. Do any of my colleagues have any other questions or comments for Chief Counsel? Councilmember Bankston.
Just a clarifying question, I think, for the public. The notice that goes out, what, who gets notified, right? I know that it's a certain, within a certain feat, so just so that's on the record, folks know how far.
I'm going to defer to Shannon Pine on that one. The code stipulates that notice will go to all property owners within 125 feet of the subject site. That also will move out if the owner of the subject site also owns abutting properties. Then that notice will go from the boundaries of those abutting properties under the same ownership. And then also, the applicant gets a notice, the owner of the property gets a notice, if there's an agent or an attorney involved, they'll get a notice, and then the area commissioner or civic association will get a notice.
Awesome. Thank you for pointing that out, because I think sometimes, if you're not in 125 feet, you still may have some reservations to this rezoning, figuring out a way of, are we utilizing our area commissions, are we utilizing different civic groups to get their word out broader to have a more in-depth conversation much sooner? So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bankston. And just one point of clarification for the public that are watching, that notice is provided for variances only. So, that's, I think, when we talk about, because of that legal standard that Chief Counsel just sort of laid out for us, is that it's on the city's responsibility from a legal standpoint to provide that notice to folks, because they own property within that area, they have a legal right to it, whereas that doesn't exist in the same way that it does for a rezoning, because they're, again, we're making a policy choice versus a, again, sort of have that quasi-adjudicial process that Chief Counsel laid out. That does not mean that council should not be doing its darndest to make sure that folks in neighborhoods through area commissions, through civic association, and other ways, should be notifying neighborhoods when there is a rezoning application that has been filed for an area. But, as Chief Counsel said, there's sort of two different buckets, and that's, I think, incumbent on us to make sure that we're doing everything we're supposed to do from a legal standpoint on the variance, but that does not mean that we should not be doing everything possible to make sure that residents and neighbors know what's happening on a rezoning front as well. Any else have any questions or comments for Chief Counsel?
Well, thank you, Chief Counsel. I appreciate the presentation here tonight and your continued work with us on this topic. Moving on, I want to introduce Senior Research Associate from the Kerwin Institute for the Study of Race and Ethnicity at the Ohio State University, Glenn Swinney, who is here to provide us with a historical perspective on the influence of exclusionary zoning policies that we know have been baked in the system for decades and decades, and regardless of how good-natured and people's thoughts are, today, we know that we're dealing with a system that has been constructed decades ago and constructed in a way that wasn't always being thoughtful about those it was affecting. So, I want to allow Ms. Swinney to have the floor.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm just going to jump into it if my slides are up. Can everyone else see them? Because they're pictures, and it's really important that you guys can see the pictures. And I don't matter, the slides are the important thing. You don't want to see me on the screen.
I feel the same way most of the time. Mark, do we have that?
There we go.
Here we are. Thank you.
I don't matter, it's the slides. So, you know, I'm assuming if you're at this zoning hearing, you probably know that inequality exists in our city and that most of you have seen some version of these maps. And, you know, every one of these maps illustrating inequality in central Ohio is some version of the same map, right? With this upside-down T running east of I-70 and south of I-71. We know these maps, right? The fact of the matter is that much of this inequality can be traced to zoning and land use and development policies and practices that were designed to create metropolitan segregation, segregation by race, ethnicity, and class. You see, in early 20th-century America, people largely relied on race, ethnicity, and class to determine social standing. White, wealthy Protestants were at the very top of this social hierarchy, and those considered non-white were at the bottom. And the definition of just what classified as white has changed dramatically over the years, even changing during this part of, the early part of the century. As our cities grew, many parts of them became unsafe for a variety of reasons. We did not have very good sanitation at this time, and our rivers were very much used as both sewers and dumps by many. And our cities also lacked many of the regulations that keep our buildings and structures safe. The density of low-income areas coupled with lack of sanitation created health problems. These were all structural issues caused by a lack of regulation, but this wasn't how those in positions of power and with wealth saw things. They associated these conditions with the people living in these spaces, people who were overwhelmingly from minoritized racial and ethnic groups. So, these people with power decided to segregate themselves, and the first tool that they used were actually restrictive covenants and home deeds, private agreements between owners that restricted what one could do with a property and that were aimed at keeping those minoritized racial and ethnic groups out largely through clauses that increased the price to build, purchase, or maintain a property. These agreements also targeted both the activities common of these groups, such as agriculture, which was very common among African-American and particularly Eastern European immigrants at this time, as well as these groups themselves. And so, here are some examples of local racial restrictions from deeds in Columbus. Notice how the first one, from 1927, from Berwick near Bexley, specifies certain rates, the certain races that are prohibited. Well, the second one, which is from the mid-'30s, I think Clinton or Clintonville or Linden, is broader, really saying anyone not of the Caucasian race. And remember, the definition of Caucasian changed over time. Jewish people were not considered Caucasian at one point. So, this definition changed. Nearly 50% of all subdivisions, entire subdivisions platted in central Ohio between 1900 and 1945, were platted with some version of these racial restrictions, and this does not include the individual homes that included these restrictions in their deeds that weren't platted with entire, that weren't built in subdivisions. Here are some examples of setback restrictions. And so, setback restrictions were first created in restrictive covenants, all right? The bottom of which includes a size requirement that is rather excessive, that has rather excessive setbacks, has a size requirement and rather excessive setbacks of 40 feet compared to the 25 in the first. Most were between 20 and 25 and 35 feet during this period, and this is the same period, 1900 through 1945. Over 80% of all subdivisions platted during this period included setbacks. Here are some examples of local use and price restrictive covenants. Notice both specify that only single-family buildings, so that's the use, single-family uses, can be constructed on the property. The top one, or I think, actually, the bottom one, yeah, the bottom one, is again, Berwick, and this one has a $10,000 price restriction, meaning that the building, the home constructed has to cost at least $10,000 or more. Over 70% of subdivisions platted in central Ohio during this period used price restrictive covenants, and over 55% had use restrictions. As residential subdivisions came, oh, sorry, here we go, we'll go to this. As residential subdivisions came together and incorporated, which is how Bexley was created, creating many of our suburbs here in Columbus, many of these restrictions were adopted in municipal zoning codes, including racial zoning, which was actually, I don't know if it was adopted in Columbus, I'm still looking into it, but it was adopted prolifically throughout the country. And while racial zoning was soon illegal, it only lasted seven years, cities began hiring planning firms to create racial city plans and zoning codes that were not explicitly racial. This often meant adopting class-based exclusionary zoning restrictions to support municipal segregation. These even included banning agriculture and small farm animals in an effort to keep out, as I said, African-Americans and Eastern European immigrants. So, you know, I know the city is also thinking about the zoning code and agriculture right Cities also used expulsion zoning to direct undesirable land uses towards areas where minoritized groups were accumulating wealth. For example, when the city of Baltimore created their first citywide zoning code, there were a couple of neighborhoods, middle-class and upper-class black suburbs that had sprung up. They zoned that entire area of the city industrial. That's a disinvestment policy. They're inviting in undesirable uses. Where is the industry in Columbus located? Who lives near it? What is the legacy of that? Because at the end of the day, this has always been about wealth, because property is the number-one way that Americans built wealth in the 20th century. And these are policies that are aimed at really determining who has access to building those wealth, those wealth-building structures. So, this, where am I? Sorry. I wrote this down because otherwise I'll just talk forever, guys, I apologize. These segregative residential development patterns were reinforced and solidified in many ways through the practice of redlining. Redlining provided the template for how to assess or grade neighborhoods to determine their eligibility for the new federal mortgage insurance program that was part of the New Deal. Redlining codified into law an association so very prevalent in society to this day that black equals risk, even though some of the federal government's own studies at the time contradicted this incorrect notion. It did this by linking the provision of federal mortgage insurance to the racial and economic segregation with the creation of the Federal Housing Administration. This meant that your average bank was only lending to people purchasing in areas deemed low-risk, primarily the A, or green, and the B, or blue, areas on the map, and these areas were nearly always segregated. These are the areas, oh, don't worry, I didn't realize I had those, sorry. These are the areas where there were price restrictions in central Ohio. Notice how they correlate with the areas where you could only buy homes if you were white in central Ohio. white in central Ohio. Those are the areas where there were racial restrictions as well. They were also the areas that used price restrictions the most, setbacks, all of those restrictions are in these same areas. And then you can see where racial restrictions were. Sorry, I don't know why I have the, but these are where the racial, it's the same map. And also, notice, it's the same map as the other maps. That upside-down T comes from this redlining map. And it's the same as this map here, which is also wealth in central Ohio. And I think it's wealth 55, yeah, 55 to 64-year-olds in central Ohio. Because this is about how we build wealth and who gets access to those wealth-building structures. Even today, central Ohio zoning codes include setbacks and lot requirements. They continue to segregate, particularly in terms of housing type. And these policies perpetuate existing spatial inequalities. And addressing the exclusionary nature of our municipal land use regulations and zoning code is a necessary first, the necessary first step to addressing these inequalities. But it is only the first step. The city will need to think critically about what tools it can leverage to level the playing field of homeownership and rental access in a region that is growing dramatically. And the city should consider the role that reparative policies can play in achieving these goals. So how can the Kerwin Institute help with this process? So I am actually currently working on a land use regulation and zoning code ranking system centered around exclusion. And I'm using central Ohio as a pilot. And this will be part of a broader project we are working on where we are rethinking our opportunity mapping approach. We are investigating the prolific use and impact of restrictive covenants in central Ohio. That's how I had all of those examples to show you. And we will be working to further demonstrate the ways that restrictive covenants were codified into zoning codes, perpetuating municipal segregation. Finally, we will be creating a policy tool to help municipalities in central Ohio identify the policies that can help them become more equitable and inclusive to help address these issues. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Glenn, for your comments here tonight. I think it's incredibly important for both the historical context but also what is coming before us. We've talked a lot about recently in the city of Columbus about the hope that's in front of us about reforming our zoning code. And look forward to that report and certainly appreciate you being here tonight and providing that presentation. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments for Glenn? Council President?
No.
Gotcha.
Sorry about that. I'm assuming that other council members would want to jump in here too. But one, first to Glenn and then certainly to the Chair. Thank you for introducing this, into this conversation. A lot of folks know that on my desk, I keep that redlining map of Columbus so that regardless, whoever you, whoever you are coming in to meet with me, and maybe even more so for myself, to remind me that that T that you talked about is 100% in correlation with every issue that this council faces now, from food insecurities to housing issues to safety and security. To your point, Glenn, it is 100%, it's the exact same areas as that 1936 Columbus redlining map. And as intentional as our legislative forefathers were to creating these connections, we have to be that intentional about finding ways to change the policies going forward. Because of the other point that you made, we are experiencing growth, which means that we are going to have some impacts on young people or for, on people 60 years from now, 70 years from now. And so I just wanted to highlight, because it is my fear, or it is my belief, that zoning certainly has the opportunity to be on the tip of the spear for some of the most sensitive conversations regarding race and class and truthfully exclusionary policies that this council sees on any given Monday. And I, again, I'm just appreciative that the Chair and this council is not willing to, because if we say that equity is important, and if my belief is held up that this is potentially where we might see the most apparent issues around race and class, then we would have to address this head-on. And so these are, that doesn't mean that there are easy answers, but it does mean that we have to speak about it, we have to be intentional about it, and we have to work with folks like Kerwin and other folks in the community to get ahead of it. And so I just appreciate you. And another thing that I would add is I think that transit goes into this too, in terms of how and where we put and encourage or support people moving around and how and where they are easily able to move around, it matters. And these are all things that we talk about at 6:30 on any given Monday. So I just appreciate you, Chair, for highlighting this.
Thank you, Council President. I think the presentation speaks for itself about what we face here as a city today, and I think what this council wants to tackle moving forward. And again, Mondays at 6:30, it can be a little in the weeds, but we, those things that are happening in the weeds translate to that map and what the future of that map looks like. So with that, I would love to pause and acknowledge Council Member Favor, who's the Chair of the Housing Committee. So as we're talking about what those maps look like and how that translates, as Glenn talked about translating wealth within a community, Council Member Favor, as the Chair of the Housing Committee, I think has a particularly unique perspective on that. So I wanted to turn it over to her for a moment.
I think Council President, Council President, Council Member Bankston wanted to hop in there too.
After you, sir. Sorry about that.
No, I just wanted to underscore and not miss this moment, because I think sometimes we see these slides and we think this of a history lesson. But it was clear what you said in your presentation, that these restrictions were going on until 1945. We have not touched our zoning code since 1956. So this is very much a part of our present. And I'm going to say it because when we talk about systemic racism, these are the systemic, the systematic pieces that we are talking about. It does have nothing to do with individual persons or personalities or people, but it's the system on which this is built and which we have to run a city. And so it is very incumbent upon us. And I'll go a step further, Council President, he's spot on. This is a racial justice, social justice, economic justice moment that we must meet as a community. The number-one wealth builder, and we talk about this gap all the time, is owning a home. And we see it in this chamber every single week. And so I want us to be sober-minded, because really that's what this kind of presentation is, is very sobering for us to sit in that and to think about it. And I'll point out another thing, that this wasn't, it is racial, but it is also, again, about this economic piece and the social piece. As the CEO of Black Community House, I look at that map and I see in red Franklinton, where the population there is over 70% white, but it has the lowest life expectancy rate in the state of Ohio. So we have a lot of work to do. So this is our moment. So I encourage folks, first off, thank you all for being here. But when we talk about this zoning code piece, this is why I get excited about it, because it is truly the biggest moment for us as a community. So thank you, Council Member and Chair Dorance, for bringing this to our attention. I just wanted to make sure that that moment wasn't left out and that we continue to underscore that, that this is not about individuals, that this is about a bigger system at play, that we all now have a role to play in dismantling, to make sure that the Columbus of 2050 is better than the Columbus of 1950. So thank you. Council Member Favor.
Thank you, Council Member Bankston and Council Member Dorance, for this important conversation. And before I even get into my remarks, just to, you know, piggyback off of the point that you just made, restrictive covenants may have legally stopped being enforceable in the '40s, in the '50s, but the private practice was continuing on years afterwards, further disenfranchising Black Americans from having the opportunity to accumulate wealth through homeownership. And that is because the FHA, the, was not providing insurance for, and loans to Black Americans to purchase property. And so you're absolutely correct. This is a conversation around social justice, around equity, around economic justice. And I, for one, as the Chair of Housing, am incredibly excited that my colleague elected to have this conversation as his first official act as the zoning chair for the city of Columbus. As been mentioned, I am the Chair of Housing, but I also have the honor of teaching a class at Denison University this semester. And tonight, my students have joined us in chambers for this important discussion around zoning. My class is entitled "Ghetto by Design: Racism and Inequity in Urban Communities." Why ghetto by design? Because race-based housing discrimination still exists today. And the impact of that discrimination is evident in the makeup of Columbus's neighborhoods today. Decades of structural racism has contributed to creating a tremendous racial disparity in Columbus. And those racial disparities in housing manifest in several ways. Our zoning procedures play a big role in helping us break the history of housing disparity. And as we have just learned, African-Americans were mostly prevented by government through state-sanctioned policies, practices, and procedures from owning homes. And while overt segregation has eased over the years, we know that race-neutral laws, practices, and procedures like zoning has been used to increase property values in some communities while also maintaining exclusivity in the distribution of public goods and services like clean water and road paving, just to name a few. Further, we know that the practice of exclusionary zoning has helped to create high-poverty areas that lack sufficient resources to provide quality schools, have limited job opportunities, higher crime rates, and lack access to quality health care. Exclusionary zoning has worked to keep affordable housing out of certain neighborhoods, thereby perpetuating racial income and class-based discrimination. Further, when we consider the impact of expulsion zoning practices, which historically have placed incompatible land uses like trash and industrial factories in minority communities, we have to soberly assess how those decisions have undermined and devalued our neighborhoods and contributed to other environmental concerns that have contributed to the health disparities that we talk about today. We need to be proactive about creating policies that create and build equity for all residents in Columbus. This is why my top priority remains developing affordable housing, advocating for mixed-income neighborhoods, and improving our housing incentive policy. We know that zoning is a powerful tool. It encourages economic growth and provides affordable housing for people who would otherwise be displaced or not have access to a community. And that is why tonight, the work that is being led by Council Member Dorance is critical in addressing our city's housing crisis. Thank you again, Council Member Dorance, for hosting this conversation, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the listening audience.
Thank you, Council Member Favor. And I just wanted to say again, thanks for bringing your class here tonight. It's always nice to have young folks that are engaged on this issue here with us. So I'm going to steal a line from our Chief Counsel. So we're going to get, I don't know if we're at the 1,000-foot level as we move on in the presentation, or 100,000, or I'm not sure what level we're about to be at, but we're going to get into a little bit about zoning as it exists today. I think we've had an excellent discussion about how we can shape the city with land use policy. With taking over this committee, there's a number of things that I think it's important for us as a council to be very clear, as I said at the outset, with the community about what we're going to do and why. And I think we've just heard a lot about the historical context, but also how that translates to the future. So there's some things that I would like to do, we're planning on doing in this committee, again, to sort of increase that transparency with applicants, increase the transparency with the community, and really have pulled, you know, pulled back and let folks see what this process actually looks like. So for council's presentation for here tonight, there's four main things we're here to talk about. And I'm going to do my best not to read off a screen with a PowerPoint presentation, which is always rather dangerous when you have one in front of you, but we'll give it a try. But first, one thing's that, again, probably the 500-foot view level is really explaining the council zoning committee process from start to finish. You've heard from Ms. Pine about what happens before it gets to council. There's often questions about what happens once it gets here. And I think we want to take some time to explain exactly what that looks like internally so that members of the community can understand that. We want to review examples of what are zoning issues and what aren't zoning issues. There's lots of confusion often when things come before council, and Chief Counsel Baker Morris alluded to some of these things, of what is zoning, what is a variance, and what isn't. That doesn't mean that some of these other issues are important, but from a legal standpoint, this body has to make certain decisions based upon what our code is. And as Chief Counsel mentioned, what is court precedent? How do we make these decisions? Want to announce some changes that we're making to our procedures here at council. And finally, which I think is one of the bigger things here for us to talk about here tonight, is our priorities as we evaluate applications that come through the process. So question ultimately starts off with, what is my job as the Chair of this committee? Good place to start, probably. So once, as Ms. Pine talked about, the applications go through the process within the departments. Ultimately, it's my role to decide when something comes before the council agenda, whether or not it's received approval from all the right bodies, whether or not it's been disapproved. It ultimately is my job to decide whether or not something is brought forward and put on the council agenda. This occurs after all the application has went through, again, all the city departments, the Development Commission, area commissions. We work very closely with our area commissions. As the former Chair of the Neighborhoods Committee, it's been my pleasure to work with so many of our area commissioners throughout my time on council, and they perform an incredibly important function for us. I always like to joke, there are seven council members. We can't be in every nook and cranny in the entire city. So we want to make sure that we have folks out in the community that live and breathe their neighborhood every single day, providing us with feedback as we make these decisions. One of the things I think is really important for us to really take a look at is, what does our codes tell us? So, you know, we talk a lot about area commissions' role in this process. One of the things I want to highlight here tonight is that this is enshrined in our city code. So when we talk about, you know, Columbus City Code 3109, it specifically lays out how our area commissions are involved in this process, both from their decision-making and from their advisory standpoint. So while their decisions aren't binding on council, our code specifically asks these neighborhood residents to make decisions and report to council and work with applicants on those, on rezonings and variances. One of the questions we, you know, get a lot is, what is the authority of commissions? Now, area commissions do a lot of different things nowadays. They work with the community on a variety of different issues. And Council Member Bankston, who's the new Chair of the, or I'm sorry, Council Member Barroso de Padilla, who's the new Chair of the Neighborhoods Committee, is certainly working very closely with the commissions on a variety of different activities. But fundamentally, the code calls out their role in land use procedures. And that's where the first sort of line of scrutiny as it comes to sort of neighborhoods is out with those commissions. Question ultimately comes, we also hear from civic associations and other neighborhood groups. Ms. Pine mentioned that there's a number of civic associations that the city works with fairly regularly. There are areas of the city that don't have an area commission, which means that we still want to hear neighborhood feedback from those folks. Now, while the code doesn't recognize those area commission, or those civic associations, it has been the longstanding practice of this council to work with those bodies. And even in areas where there is an area commission, if there's an active civic association, we still want to invite applicants to be active with those groups, because more neighborhood engagement is always better. And council's going to continue this practice of making sure that we're working with civic associations and other neighborhood groups, especially when there's not an area commission that's present. So what is the timeline? So this gets you a little bit of an idea on how things actually get to council, how they show up on 6:30 on Mondays. So our clerk, every Friday, emails our office a list of zoning ordinances that are eligible to be scheduled. This is one of the rather unique things about zoning. This is one of the rather unique things about zoning, is that citizens are actually applying with the city to ask for a change in land use. So we have actual individuals that are petitioning their government to ask for a change. And this is the first part of it as it lands on council's desk. So again, those things come to us on Friday. Every single Wednesday, like today, my staff and I sit down every single week at 11:00 a.m. with members of the administration and other folks to review whether or not a application that's been filed is ready to come before the body. Zonings or variances that have a disapproval or a close vote from an area commission or civic association, we are committed to meeting with the applicant, with that neighborhood group, within 30 days of that coming before us. We think that is very important to make sure that things are moving through the process and applicants have an expectation of when they're going to be able to work with council on moving their application forward. On Thursdays, we compile a list of everything that is coming before us. This report includes all the information that is there. This is really important to make sure that I'm providing to our council members themselves, ultimately, who are voting on these ordinances, all of the relevant information that's been provided by area commissions, by the city departments themselves, and any other issues that are coming before us. And then ultimately, it's Monday night, 6:30 on council, is when these rezonings and variances come before this body. One of the questions we get fairly frequently is, when do I contact council? Obviously, members of the community are welcome to contact us anytime about anything. You can find my email fairly easily. I'm sure you can find that with the other members themselves. But when it comes to zoning, really, as Ms. Pine mentioned earlier, there's a lot of work that happens before it comes to council. So one of the things we really try to encourage folks is that let the application get through the area commission, let it get through the civic association, let it get through the Development Commission, and then engage with us. We want to make sure that that engagement is healthy and helpful. But if you sort of come to us way too early in the process, if there's concerns, we are hopeful and want to encourage applicants and neighborhood groups to work together to resolve those differences. And there's still room for us to work on those things later on, but we really want to make sure that folks' advocacy is well-timed and well-placed. One of the things that we're really emphasizing with this committee is, the area commissions have a standard form that they fill out, and that form has a note section. And a lot of area commissions do a wonderful job with this. Some historically have not put as much information there, but we really want to hear from them about their very specific concerns around zoning. So here's a copy of that form. This actually details the reasons why folks voted yes, reasons folks voted no, and also actually identifies what is a zoning concern and what is something that is concerning to that neighborhood group that's associated with the rezoning and variance, but not necessarily the land use or the variance. And it's very important to have the distinction between the two of them. So what happens when an application has a disapproval on the recommendation? Again, as I said, we're going to meet with the commission, we're going to meet with the neighborhood group, we're going to meet the applicant within 30 days. It is our expectation that all parties, all parties are going to work in good faith to reach a solution. Again, having you've been the Chair of the Neighborhoods Committee and working so closely with area commissions, it is so incredibly valuable for those bodies to be really upfront and transparent about what their issues with an application is on the front end, and really to help us understand, well, is this a zoning or a variance concern, or is it something that's associated with the development that we can work with other city departments on addressing? We really want folks to be upfront and working with those bodies, actually making sure that if there are concerns, that they are, again, articulated upfront rather than sort of down the line. One of the things that we've seen, again, as Columbus grows, having an application move through the process, identifying things weeks and months later, sort of delays those things and certainly does not put, whether it's the applicant or the area commission, in the best possible position to help resolve some of those issues. One of the things that we're announcing here tonight is soon that we will actually be introducing an applicant modification form. So this is for applicants to fill out as they're going before an area commission or another neighborhood group that actually memorializes the changes that they have made to their application based upon that neighborhood feedback. I think it's very important for us to actually standardize those kinds of things. One of the things that we see at council, particularly when there's something that is controversial that comes before us, is that if compromises are reached and made, we want to make sure that those are memorialized in time and then all parties actually agree that those things have actually been resolved. We want everyone to be on the same page and everyone to remain credible working through the process. That form, again, is forthcoming. Along with this presentation, we're actually going to have a new city council zoning website where you can actually gain information for things that we're talking about here. Again, one of the big points is making sure that this committee is as transparent with the public about our decision-making as we possibly can be. So we've talked a lot about how council sort of approaches these things. As Chief Counsel Baker Morris mentioned earlier, city code gives council-wide discretion to make determinations on when it's appropriate for us to grant a rezoning or application. Again, the focus of this determination is on the use of the land, not necessarily other aspects of the development. This has been something that we've really tried to focus to work with our neighborhood groups on, is identifying the issues that are associated potentially with the land use itself, and then issues that are associated that are neighborhood concerns, but maybe not the land use question. Council has historically worked very closely with our area commissions and other groups and vote generally nine times out of 10 with those bodies. But we want to make sure that there's an open line of communication between all parties and everyone's working in good faith together. So the question is, what's the right balance? As we've talked about here tonight, a number of speakers have mentioned, we have to look at an application for rezoning or a variance holistically. So we're going to ask, as a council, we've talked about the process that it happens before it gets to us. I've just sort of outlined what happens once it's here, and then the members of this body have to make our decision. And certainly, those things are going to include the area commission recommendation, whether or not city departments have approved, Development Commission, whether or not there's public support, the needs of the city, our council priorities, which I'll lay out here in a moment, and the actual zoning code itself. So again, is this something that relates to the code or is it not? It's our job to really balance all these factors and make a determination whether or not we feel like that application should be approved. So as I mentioned, there's things that come up with almost every single application that comes before council, and some of those things are related to zoning or variance, and some of those things are, again, concerns that are associated but not necessarily tied directly to the piece of legislation that's in front of this body. So the question is, there's the very sort of legalese definition of zoning, but as Chief Counsel talked about earlier, this is a policy question for council. What is not zoning, right? Rentals versus owner-occupied, litter. What is the building, what color of the building is going to be painted? Is it going to be a short-term rental? What's the construction schedule of the project going to be? We always hear, we want this specific type of store and this develop it and not another kind. Those are all things that are important to neighborhoods. Those are things that this council can work with applicants on addressing to make sure that neighborhood issues are being addressed throughout the process. But ultimately, that's not part of the piece of legislation that comes before this body for us to say yes or no to. Council has historically been very active with city departments and neighborhood bodies to address these things, and we're going to continue to do so. But ultimately, it's a question of, do we approve the legislation that's in front of us or not? So some of the changes to our procedures. So as Chief Counsel mentioned earlier, there's a difference between rezoning applications and council variances. As I announced at our last council meeting on Monday, that affects who speaks before those different pieces of legislation. As we've talked about, the notice requirement is provided both for rezonings and variances, but from a variance standpoint, we need to make sure that we're providing opportunity for folks that are economically impacted potentially by that variance to appear before this body. So historically, we've only limited, we've limited three speakers for each piece of legislation. Moving forward for variances, we will not be limiting speakers for variances. However, we will be asking folks either that have been provided notice or folks when they fill out a speaker slip to detail why they're an impacted party. It's part of our job to make sure that we're being as open and honest with folks as we can be. So it's incumbent upon us to make sure that folks that have an interest, as legally defined, are able to be before this body and provide their comments. We're going to swear in the city staff at the beginning of each zoning meeting, not for every variance. We've worked very closely with Chief Counsel on sort of the best procedure for making this happen. And finally, the committee is only going to hear staff presentations for ordinances that have a recommendation for disapproval from a city department, a Development Commission, or area commission, or if we have a public speaker signed up against the ordinance. Ordinances that have approval from all the recommending bodies, we're not going to ask for a staff presentation since there's been no opposition that's been voiced. And again, with the goal being to enhance our ability to provide notification to folks in the community, we want to make sure that if, again, if folks sign up to speak on an ordinance, that they are given the ability to do so. But for those ordinances that do have universal support, we're not going to require a staff presentation moving forward. As I've mentioned, we're going to make some changes to the types of speakers that we have before council because of the things that we've outlined here tonight. One thing that we do want to make sure is very clear is that a representative from the area commission and the applicant are always invited to speak on an application for rezoning or for variance. Written correspondence will be accepted from anyone. That's going to be different than how it has sort of worked previously. But whenever there's written correspondence that is sent to my office or sent to the clerk, that will make sure that that is shared with each office prior to the 6:30 meeting on Mondays. We're going to be looking to make these changes starting on the council meeting on March 21st. And finally, one of the questions that I am continually asked, and frankly, I was on a call today in which we had area commissioners sort of asking this question, is how do council make their decision when they have a piece of legislation that comes before us? And I think it's really important for this body to actually articulate the boxes that we're looking to see are checked when we're evaluating a policy choice, whether or not we believe that the land use is appropriate, the requests that's come before us. And again, this is not council saying, hey, we want to change this. We have someone who's filed an application, and then we need to review it. And we've talked about all the things that happen before it even gets to us. We have wide discretion to make those determinations for rezonings. Again, different for variance based upon the legal requirements that Chief Counsel outlined earlier. But one of the things we've never historically just said out loud, what are things that members are sort of asking about? This is somewhat difficult when we have the volume of requests that come through council every single week. But I think if we're going to talk about transparency and making sure folks in the community understand our decision-making process, I think it's important for us to say these things out loud so that members of the community understand how we're evaluating these applications. So over the past couple of weeks, I've spent time with every single member of council and sort of asked the questions about what is important to them? How do they approach making a decision on an application that comes before the body? And here are the nine things that I've heard from some council members, some, all of them, but these are council priorities. And as we move forward, our council report is actually going to memorialize whether or not an application checks one of these boxes or all of these boxes. And I think this is particularly important for us, again, to say to applicants, our area commissioners, and other folks about the things that council is going to be looking at as these things make their way through the process. So one, affordable housing, mixed-income housing stock. Two, area commission recommendations, city department and Development Commission recommendation, proximity incorporation of transit infrastructure, green space and environmental considerations, whether or not the project provides job creation, proximity to job centers, neighborhood needs and requests that the applicants have been met, private investment in public infrastructure, proposed density that matches the infrastructure or adjacent uses. And just want to get in a little bit to what we mean as I've talked with individual council members about these different priorities. Again, this presentation is going to be on the city council website, zoning website shortly, so I won't read them all off to you. But some of these things are fairly self-explanatory, but some of them also connect right back to some of the presentations that we've had earlier. But it's no secret that council has talked a lot about, the housing chair has talked a lot about, that we don't have enough affordable housing within the city, that we don't have enough mixed-income neighborhoods and housing within our city. Those are things that we're going to, these are things that council has historically always asked questions about, but I think it's important, again, for us to be very upfront with the community about how we're evaluating these pieces of legislation as they come to us. Area commission recommendation, as I've said, proximity incorporation of transportation infrastructure is something that council president has talked about, whether or not, again, something is being created in the city and whether or not the folks that live there or work there actually have access to transit. Green space and environmental considerations. So one of the things that this council and certain members on the body have worked very hard on are things like the Urban Forestry Master Plan, projects that we've had individual members work with applicants and area commissions to make sure that mature trees within a neighborhood are actually being preserved when there's going to be construction somewhere nearby, whether or not new buildings are actually utilizing efficient systems and green technology. These are things that, again, as our city grows, the members have said that they're interested in knowing whether or not an application incorporates. Job creation and proximity to job centers, whether or not the development or what is going to occur based upon the approval of that is going to create jobs that pay a living wage. Does this application contribute to the health of small businesses within a community? Does it contribute to the overall economic development of an area of the city? Those are things that members have said they would like to see when things come through council. Seven, neighborhood needs and requests to the application are met. So as I talked about earlier, applicants are now going to have the ability, working with the area commission or other civic group, actually to memorialize changes that have been made based upon those requests made by folks in the community. So whether or not they're making certain investments within a community that we think is necessary, it's no secret that parts of the city do not have enough retail that provides fresh food to our residents or healthcare. Those are the kinds of things that we look at. The zoning will likely come into play whether or not those resources end up within a neighborhood. Private investment infrastructure, number eight, whether an applicant is investing in sidewalks, crosswalks, green space, or other things that's going to be beneficial to the entire neighborhood and not just the individual development. And finally, whether or not the proposed density matches the area infrastructure and adjacent uses. You've heard a lot about the need for density within the city based upon the growth that we expect. That said, there are certainly ways in which we need to match that density to make sure that we have more jobs, more housing stock, but also it matches the transportation infrastructure that is there and everything that needs to be there in order for that to be a welcome addition to a neighborhood and not something that just simply drains the resources and creates more issues. As I said, the zoning report that council members will now get every single week will actually identify whether or not a zoning or variance application will produce an outcome that council has said is in fact a priority of theirs. Lastly, the last slide is just my contact information. One of the things that my job as the Chair of this committee is to make sure that we're working with applicants, making sure we're working with area commissioners, city staff, to make sure that we're getting to a place in which we can bring these pieces of legislation forward and the needs and issues of the community have been met. That has historically been what the Chair of the committee, I've got big shoes to fill with former councilmember Tyson, who worked tirelessly with a lot of neighborhood groups and applicants to find resolutions, and that's certainly something that this council is going to continue to do. And certainly, I think the community is going to continue to expect of council and certainly my office. But again, one of the goals for me tonight was, I think council members have always thought about these priorities. We've always talked about these kinds of things being important to us. But one of the goals here tonight was actually to identify publicly how members are viewing what is most important to them as they have applications come before them. So I hope that has helped folks in the community understand a little bit more about our decision-making process, our procedures that exist here, and certainly how, again, as Chair of this committee... committee, I want to work with my colleagues to be as transparent with members of the community as we possibly can be about the decisions that come before this body. So with that, I am eagerly looking forward to turning over to Assistant Director for Growth of the Department of Economic Development, Kevin Wheeler. And the reason I'm so excited for Kevin to be here, and he's probably feeling a bit of a burden on his shoulders at the moment, is that we've talked a lot about this evening, about the future, about what the current code is, its limitations, the roles that we all have. And I think everyone has identified what zoning and land use can be moving forward. And, you know, we have said publicly that as a city that this is a top priority of the mayor, it's a top priority of the council president, it's a top priority of mine as the Chair of the Committee, to modernize our zoning code, our zoning procedures in a way in which we're identifying ways to make our city grow in a thoughtful and equitable way. And that job falls to Mr. Wheeler to work with us as council to bring forward. And with that, we'd love to turn the mic over to Kevin to share a little bit about where we're at in the process, what has happened already in this process, where we are today, and where we're hoping to go in the future as a city. Kevin?
Thank you very much. Committee Chair Dorans and rest of the council, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It is both sobering and exciting. You know, I've been with the city, I'm a city planner, I've been with the city of Columbus for 35 years. And, you know, this is something that we've needed to do for much of that time. Our code was established in the 50s. It has been updated on an ongoing basis since that time, so there's probably not a single word from the 1950s. But it's been that long since we've had the opportunity to really take a comprehensive look at it and see whether or not it works for us, whether it's supporting the kind of community that we want to be. And really, in the last 10 years, last 20 years, but particularly in the last 10, it's become apparent that the city's past, our history of territorial growth, is really changing. And we're a city that's growing up more than out. And as we do that, we need to examine the tools that we use to manage our city, and the zoning code is a fundamental part of that. We talked about transit this evening a little bit, that's another part of it, the sustainability of our city environmentally and economically. But the zoning code is really central to a lot of that work. So last fall, we had a, we concluded a process to assess our current code. This was done by a third party, a consultant team, that really dug into the code, spoke with some of our stakeholders, community folks, folks from a lot of different settings, worked with city staff, and they ultimately prepared a report that we presented in October. That report's available on our website, as well as additional information about the process of the assessment. But there were several key findings, five key findings that they came away with. One, the standards are not tailored to local conditions. And what that really means is that it's a big city, 220 square miles, we have different kinds of neighborhoods, and the zoning code is kind of a one-size-fits-all. And we've developed some tools to compensate for that, but those are pretty complex, and ultimately, we would be better served by a code that recognizes some of the fundamental differences in neighborhood types. Two, the code does not prioritize housing and transit needs equitably. I can't begin to replicate the work that Glenn and Sweeney has provided, the, excuse me, the information that Glenn and Sweeney provided to us earlier this evening, but you've heard and perhaps understand how important that background is to understanding the code as it exists today, how it's used, and how we have to think about changing it. The code isn't user-friendly. You know, zoning isn't by nature a really warm and fuzzy topic, but our code is particularly challenging if you are not familiar with it. There is an over-reliance on site-by-site negotiated zoning actions, and this is a function of an underlying code that no longer works for our community. I think if we go out on a field trip into the city and look at some of those projects, some of the development that many of us would think are among the best we've seen, that we're proud of, people in the community, one of the things that we realize is that those projects very often cannot be done with the underlying zoning code. We have to find ways to accommodate them, and that's part of why you see council having so much zoning activity, that's part of why my colleague Shannon Pines is such a busy person. So there is that over-reliance. And then also, the process up for reviewing, making decisions, is multi-layered, it's scattered, and that's something that creates uncertainty. So folks aren't clear about how that process works, and we've already heard tonight from Councilmember Dorans about initiatives that he wants to undertake to make that process as smooth as possible in our current, with our current code. So along with recognizing some of the problems with our code, recommendations emerged from the process and the consultant team about the future. So number one, emphasize equity. And I want to take a moment here to say that my conversations with Mayor Ginter have reinforced this repeatedly. This is very high on his list of priorities for this process. Same conversations I've had with council president. They view equity and whether this code moves us forward in the arena of equity as being central to this work. So we want to make sure that we develop a code that encourages investment in all neighborhoods and supports the creation of housing, jobs, and transit. The code needs to be comprehensive and modernized. That just goes without saying. We want a code that makes sense and that is framed in such a way that it serves us over time. We are working now as a city with Coda, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Franklin County, and other partners on LinkUS. And LinkUS is an initiative to bring enhanced transit to our community. And there's a particular focus right now on three corridors, northwest, west broad, east main, and we know that investments in transit to provide better access to jobs, housing choices, education, healthcare, only works if we have land use and development that comes alongside of it and takes advantage of that opportunity and provides options for our residents. So we want to take an early look at what we can do in these critical corridors, mixed-use zoning, zoning that would support development in those areas. A hybrid approach. A hybrid approach really is just a way of saying that we can't do a one-size-fits-all code. We need to recognize that what works in the central city, the older portions of our city, maybe doesn't work so well in the suburban portions of the city and vice versa. Right now, we have parking requirements, for instance, that are blanket across most of the city. And, you know, that doesn't really take into consideration walkability, transit access, and things like that. We need an objective, predictable review process. Not predictable as in you're guaranteed a particular outcome, but you understand the process, and it's predictable, and you can follow it. And then finally, we recognize that this code update is only going to work if it's a product of community engagement and collaboration that really breaks new ground for us. We need to engage folks that we don't normally see at the table with respect to the development conversation. And some of the conversation earlier this evening really reinforces why that's so important. And so we plan to place particular emphasis on this part of the project, broad awareness and understanding. Some areas of consideration and opportunity, you know, sort of getting down to more topical areas, you know, we know that we need to look at our job centers and our job-oriented districts. We know that we need to look at transit. We know that we need to look at mixed-use corridors. Many of our main streets, our main corridors, have been vital in our neighborhoods but have suffered from disinvestment over time. We believe that these areas hold the key to our future. We believe the same thing about some of our mixed-use centers, some of the areas and shopping centers that maybe will not, again, be what they were from a retail perspective, but hold the opportunity to attract new investment and development. We know that we need to look at neighborhood infill. How do we do that in a way that ensures quality infill development, that adds housing opportunities, and is additive to our neighborhoods? So we're going to be talking about these things and many, many more as we go through this process. It is a complex process. It will take time, but we know that our current code doesn't support where we're trying to go as a community. We also know that change is going to occur. It will occur, so we need to be proactive. We have an opportunity here to be proactive and help to shape it. We're learning from peer cities. The good news is that we're not the first city that's done this, and so we have made it our business to understand whether the cities have experienced and learned from that. And then, you know, there's a cost of not doing this, and this goes back to the change that will occur. There is a cost of not updating our code, and that is that we're having the same conversation except the conditions are worse in five years and 10 years. And I have to say that as someone who's kind of in the twilight of my career, it's a really gratifying thing to be working at a city with a mayor and a council that want to take this project on. Just a couple more slides, and I will wrap up. So we have a unique opportunity to update the code in a manner that supports our aspiration to be an equitable, thriving city. We want to align it with strategies for affordable housing, better transit, environmental sustainability, and economic resilience. This is going to require engagement, ideas, and support of the community. Finally, where we're at right now, practically, we're building our team. We're building a staff and consultant team. We're in the midst of the procurement process, and I look forward to coming back later this spring to this council to ask for your support in moving forward with that. We will have a technical consultant, we'll have a consultant who'll be helping us with engagement particularly. We'll be developing our project schedule, developing a plan for community engagement, we'll begin the technical analysis, we'll be updating our zoning code update webpage. Hopefully, that'll be more user-friendly and accessible as well. You'll be hearing more from us. I know that this is a process that folks are impatient for. Let me just say that we are working hard behind the scenes to sort of build the foundation for this. So that concludes my comments. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate it. One thing I wanted to mention is that we talk about this being something that's on its way and building that foundation. You know, there's been discussions around council and certainly with you and others about what do we do in sort of the meantime? And I think we've talked about some of the council processes here tonight, but I know that there's going to be other things between now and the sort of comprehensive sort of rewrite in which we'll hopefully be able to take some bites of that apple as well to help, you know, I think, solve some of the issues that I think you articulated well, Kevin. So thank you for being here tonight. Wanted to, do any of my colleagues have any questions for Kevin? Councilmember Faver?
I'll just acknowledge, you know, we're currently going through a review update to the city's CRA policy, which is the main tool that we use to help drive affordable housing by, through incentivization for developers and other folks to build in a more equitable way. And I think that it's important for the community to understand or to know that we can definitely walk and chew gum at the same time, that we can have this high-level conversation about how our CRA policy changes and that it has to reflect our priorities as it relates to housing and how those efforts are not siloed in a separate bucket, that they work hand-in-hand with the zoning revisions that absolutely have to take place. And it's ironic that the three of us are on, left here on the dais today because economic development, zoning, and housing, we cannot operate in such a way that these different committees don't work collectively, or they should work collectively together to ensure that we are developing in a way that reaches the mayor's priorities as well as this council's priorities. So I just want to make sure that we're uplifting that, that that has not fallen by the wayside from a housing perspective, but it's absolutely incorporated in the thoughts and the policies that Councilmember Dorans is elevating here today.
Thank you, Councilmember Faver. Wanted to turn the hearing now to public comment. So we've talked a lot about this issue tonight, and this is fundamental to people in our community, fundamental to neighbors, which is why I'm very pleased that we have a number of public speakers who've taken the time to engage here tonight. The one thing I will also say is that this hearing does not end the discussion around this, that certainly doesn't end the discussion with any of the folks we've heard from tonight. So people are, feel free to whether or not it's a council zoning issue, whether or not a departmental zoning issue. We are, again, interested in making this process work for the community. So with that, want to ask the members of the public that are here to testify, we have some who are here in person, we also have some that are here virtually. If they, when I call their name to come to the podium, or we'll get you on WebEx, identify or let us know your name, any organization you represent, please try and keep your comments to three minutes or less. I think we've got a buzzer, but we'll try to be, as I say, Midwestern polite and let you wrap up before getting beyond that. But with that, I'd like to invite our first speaker, Ms. Carly Boos.
My name is Carly Boos. Speaking tonight on behalf of the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio, I want to thank you Chair Dorans, council members, for the opportunity to be here with you. As you know, the city of Columbus's affordable housing needs are a generation, or two, or three, in the making. They're multi-dimensional, and they're not going to be solved with a single bullet, but they can be solved. We're all familiar with the eye-popping statistic that 54,000 of our Franklin County families pay more than half their income towards housing. Each month, that means they are forced to choose between food, or medicine, or school, and shelter. Just to prevent the situation from growing worse, we should be building 14,000 homes per year, but we're not. Even on our best year, we're falling thousands of homes short of that goal, and as a result, 29% of Ohio's renters don't know how they're going to pay rent this month. Meanwhile, our peers in cities like Charlotte, and Nashville, and Austin are building more than double the number of homes that we are. But unlike our peers, Columbus is built for progress, we are built to do better, we are built for opportunity and for equity, and the city has already begun to activate that power. We've passed fair housing laws, we've passed support for the Housing Action Fund, we've launched and completed the pilot program for our first-ever Affordable Housing Bond package. Moving forward, the alliance is excited for the immense opportunity that the American Relief Plan brings. Dedicating just 30% of that one piece of one part of funding could create more than 1,800 new homes. It could also help thousands of homeowners make critical repairs to their property, and it could support the housing needs of hundreds of our residents as they gain the education that will equip them for the economy of tomorrow. This is an important investment we can make in our healthy housing system today. That will kickstart our recovery like nobody's business, but it's not going to solve it all by itself. Part of the rest of that conversation is happening tonight. Right now, the government procedure needed to build a house is too confusing, it takes too long, and it costs too much money. And the longer it takes for an idea to work its way through dismay of appraisals, the fewer funders remain at the end of the tunnel to support the affordability needs. Unfortunately, it's no longer possible to be just a guy with a piece of land and a good idea. Now you need to have an attorney's understanding of the zoning code, an architect's understanding of the building code, and an accountant's understanding of the financing mechanisms, or you need to hire people who have those skills, in which case you have to pass that cost on to the end user, the tenant or the homeowner. Moreover, the rules and the norms for building housing in our community vary greatly by neighborhood, reducing transparency, predictability, and, as Kevin said, access. This doesn't just affect the number of homes we are able to create to meet our people's needs, it also restricts who is able to build in our city, limiting opportunity for small and often minority-owned businesses that lack the scale to compete in this opaque environment. For these challenges, answers are not just intuitive, they are cost-free. We can educate decision-makers on our housing needs, and we can adopt a green-tape approach to the building process in which the rules are clear and evenly applied, where the whole of government is unified in our goal of meeting our diverse needs. Thank you. I'm happy to answer questions.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions from Ms. Boos? Councilmember Brankston?
Carly, thank you for being here. You mentioned something, and I just want you just to hit on it just very briefly, but talk about the supply issue. I think that when we think about affordable housing, we only think about the price, but there's also, what is crunching down on us is the supply issue as well, so if you could just hit on that very quickly.
Yeah, so right now, Franklin Yeah, so right now, Franklin County-specific, we only have 32 homes for every 100 extremely-low-income people who need them. And because of that, the cost to rent just a plain old modest affordable home in our community is $19.83 an hour. That's what a wage earner needs to have coming in every month. And most of our jobs don't pay anywhere near that, only about 1 in 10 of our jobs pay in that range. So there's absolutely a supply issue. There's different ways we can slice and dice that to figure out what is needed at what different price points, but one way that I was looking at just this morning, because I'm a nerd and I'm curious, Business First just had a wonderful article on what the income ranges are going to be for the new employees at the Intel plant, at the fabs. The lowest range for these kind of professional services is $35,000 or so a year, nice, healthy wage. The upper echelons are closer to $170 a year. How many houses do you think we have on Zillow right now that any one of those employees could afford? Three. In our entire county, we have three homes that one of these prospective employees, any one of them, could afford. That's the supply issue.
Thank you, Carly, for being here tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Next, we have Ms. Christina Charles. Ms. Charles?
Thank you very much for letting me speak this evening. My name is Christina Charles. I am just a homeowner here in Franklin County, so I definitely don't have the stats and the figures. I'm more to speak about the zoning issue, the difficulty to get through the zoning issues that a single homeowner would have, has as you go through this process. So being a homeowner, property owner in Columbus, the zoning process is extremely complicated to navigate. You have to have a lawyer or somebody else that has that legal mindset, and if you can't afford one, you really are struggling to figure out how to get through all the processes to be heard for any issues that you might have in regards to zoning, for or against. You know, in addition, the large number of requests don't really take into full account what the community is needing or looking at. I know of one in particular that directly affects my property and have not been able to speak any part of why we're against it and why we're for it, because we just were one of multiple people. And before, with only allowing three people, we weren't ones that were allowed to speak. So it's just very convoluted and very complicated for the average homeowner to understand the zoning and the variance process. You know, it was already brought up, you know, the due process in the variance aspect. And before, I mean, I'm very grateful for the changes that I just heard tonight, allowing more than just three speakers, because before, only allowing three speakers, there was not a holistic view of what the concerns were for that area. So coming here tonight definitely provided more information, but I still think there is a lot more work that needs to be done to help both current homeowners, soon-to-be homeowners, and the community in a whole with the zoning and the variance process. So I just appreciate your time for letting me speak.
Yeah, thank you for being here tonight. We'll make sure we follow up, and one of the things that we definitely want to do is, as I've said a number of times, be as transparent with folks as we possibly can be, and to your point, that's also letting folks know how to engage and sort of the ways to do so. So we'll make sure we follow up, and, yeah, suggestions that you have, we'll certainly be interested in chatting with you about it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Area Commissioner Kelly Arnold, who I believe is joining virtually.
I'm over here.
Commissioner! Sorry, Sharon was joining virtually.
And actually, Sharon won't be able to join us. She had another commitment that she had to get to.
Commissioner, thank you for being here.
Thank you, and good evening, and thank you, Councilmember Dorance, for this opportunity, and your other fellow colleagues here tonight. As you noted, I'm Kelly Arnold, and I'd like to speak about providing my personal observations as the zoning chair for the Far West Side Area Commission. While the city's processes categorize applications in four main ways, rezoning, council variance, graphics variances, and zoning adjustments, I tend to view the cases that come before us through a lens of scale and planning. That scale is relatively simple, small, medium, and large. Small is typically the homeowner trying to navigate the processes of the city for a simple variance. They are often unaware of the codes and the impact to their property. And in our area, it is often a function of not understanding where they live. And so we try to support and educate them as much as possible. Medium-size usually involves a commercial property or apartment complex. These are also relatively straightforward, but may involve some discussions, research, and negotiations to achieve a good balance for the community and the development. The large-scale developments, on the other hand, have far-reaching impacts, not just for our area, but regional repercussions as well. And these are the types of development that concern me as the process has previously been narrowly constrained through the council's zoning chair, as these projects have implications for transportation, infrastructure, utilities, police, fire, health services, environment, and education, just to name a few, and we've heard a lot about it tonight. It's important that the conversations are taking place with and among all council members in the context of their other committee assignments. Having those conversations is critical to ensuring the right questions are being asked in order to produce high-quality outcomes for all areas of our city. I encourage you to evaluate your operations and methodology as the current zoning chair that can facilitate that dialogue with your colleagues and the community, especially for developments of significant scope and scale. And I'll tell you, I've heard some very good things here tonight along that path. Further, as the city looks to reform its zoning code, it is critical that planning is not lost in the noise. We need far more effective planning in our city to ensure the needs of its residents are being met. Within our area commission, the Trabe-Roberts Area Plan is theoretically a guiding document. However, significant departures from this plan and potential land uses have been taken, have taken place since its adoption in 2011, not like our 1950 zoning code, but still 10 years out, leaving our area with many challenges as a result. We need to ensure as the code changes, it's working in concert with effective and comprehensive planning to create communities that, where the needs can be met for all people. So I thank you again for your time and your efforts on behalf of our city, and I look forward to the future work ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate being here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bangston, do you have any questions?
I just want to say, as the new guy, you're doing a great job to start off, so, and I can say, Councilmember Dorance has done a fantastic job of engaging all of us in the process, so hopefully you can see a difference. But thank you for what you're doing at the area commission level, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much, and yes, like I said, I've heard some great things here tonight.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Next, we have Mr. Joe Motill, who I believe is joining us virtually. Mark, do you have Joe?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Chair, Councilman Dorance, and members of City Council. I'm speaking on behalf of Columbus Neighbors United tonight. One thing we can all agree on is that our zoning code needs to be overhauled to some degree and less complicated. In terms of those claiming the current process is a hindrance, overbearing, and costly to some, I agree the process should be simplified, but the developers and their zoning attorneys bring much of that blame on to themselves. When a developer initially brings forth an outlandish proposal, such as the Pavey Square Project that started out with 11 stories and was eventually reduced to five stories, they knew full well that it would cause a lot of controversy. And then they came back later with a more reasonable proposal that everyone could actually work with. So the developer and his team have already wasted people's time, but the developer can afford to do this because they are loaded with cash, and this age-old game of fictitious compromise continues to be played out. This has been true for over the three decades that I have been directly involved with as a zoning chair of an area commission and someone who follows, as you know, development very closely in Columbus. The need for the code to address truly affordable housing for our low-to-middle income levels at 80% AMI and less has never been greater. And yes, denser development will help, but now, but how dense and where high-density and moderate density is permitted is the key to maintaining a quality of life for singles, couples, those who want to raise families, seniors, people of all income levels, ages, race, and gender. Our city's never-ending barrage of market-rate unaffordable housing for corporate Columbus employees and established institutions is not the answer. More of this continued type of high-density market-rate housing will never help to address our affordable housing crisis, but to the contrary, will saturate our core urban neighborhoods with economically and socially segregated communities, which has already taken place. The new code should allow for and encourage smaller homes from 900 to 1,200 square feet, allow for the construction of doubles, four-to-six-unit apartment buildings along secondary residential streets. Higher density that is currently being constructed along our business corridors is acceptable. In order to maintain the architectural significance and character of our city's designated neighborhood, historic districts, there needs to be specific zoning guidelines and criteria for new development in those areas. Developing on nearly every square inch of vacant land in our city without setting aside green spaces, reducing some of the advancements we are making towards addressing climate change. These zoning changes should not be driven by the false claims that high-density everywhere in our city will possibly, at some point in our lifetime, help to create truly affordable housing. Using the term sprawl as a fear tactic and equating it to the loss of the most beautiful farmland on the planet is nothing more than a ploy used to promote only high-density housing as a primary solution to addressing our housing crisis. 500 acres of prime Hartman Farms farmland to Google was recently lost to build a data center. Hundreds of acres of farmland for the construction of other data centers surrounding metropolitan Columbus has also been gobbled up. Hundreds of more acres of farmland is being consumed to build logistics center warehouses, and now the recent 3,200 acres, but mostly farmland, that will be used for Intel. The fact is, our 15-county region is growing as a whole and not just Columbus, which does not equate to sprawl, but regional growth. In closing, I'm also concerned as to whether or not the city is going to streamline the zoning process to the point where area commissions, civic associations, and the public input on new development will no longer be part of the zoning application process. And finally, regarding council members' comments earlier about racially segregated housing, the average income for a black person in Columbus is about $35,600, which is lower than the 80% and 100% AMI set-aside units of the city's tax incentive policies. So you really need to think about that when you start speaking about racially segregated housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Motill. Next speaker we have is Mindy Justice, who I think is in chambers. Mindy?
Hello, Committee Chair Dorance, council members. I'm here today on behalf of Neighbors for More Neighbors Columbus to offer some suggestions, some specific suggestions to reform the current, very outdated zoning code and review process. Just a reminder, Neighbors for More Neighbors Columbus is a grassroots resident-driven advocacy group that stands for more housing of all types and all shapes and all sizes for all people. We know that zoning codes were once successfully used to improve quality of life, but that their overzealous application has led to highly segregated and inequitable neighborhoods. We've already heard that data earlier tonight. Census data also shows us that Columbus has just experienced the largest numerical population growth in our history. That's why policymakers like yourselves must carefully consider the future role of zoning to shape our communities and housing affordability. I think I've heard that from you tonight. Our question remains, if you don't want new neighbors near you specifically, then where should the 12,000 people that the city of Columbus adds annually live? So because we support adding more housing, I'm going to offer up these following strategies for specific consideration. Allow fourplexes by right throughout the city. This would mean that in any area of Columbus, a residential structure of up to four units would be allowed without a variance. Eliminate outdated parking minimums that increase the cost to build. Reexamine height restrictions, especially along transit corridors. While recognizing that concentrating all housing along busy streets isn't an ideal solution either, not everybody wants to live in a concrete jungle. Re-permit accessory dwelling units throughout the city immediately. Expedite the approval process of projects that increase housing stock. When demolishing or significantly renovating residential structures, require the replacement of at least the same number of housing units. Create permit pathways, permitting pathways for innovative housing options like co-living, cooperative residences, and tiny homes. Include requirements or incentives like density bonuses for sustainability measures like permeable pavements and tree plantings. Diversify housing voices. I want to really bring this to everyone's attention. Diversify housing voices and consider the housing needs of future residents, not only current homeowners, also renters who feel like the fabric of a community. Consider thoughtful policy links between employer tax incentives and the creation of new housing. I want to say, just in closing, our region has an affordability problem. We heard about that a little bit ago. Zoning reform is not the single solution, but it provides the template from which many of our solutions can originate. If we do nothing, our region's affordability problem will become a crisis like a lot of other American cities have experienced. The federal and state governments are not going to solve our housing challenge for us. We must take control of our future, and the zoning code reforms that we are recommending provide actionable steps for a more equitable future. The time to act is now, and I appreciate this matter.
Thank you, Mindy, for being here tonight. Councilmember? Thank you. Next, we have Mr. John Malachi. John?
Chairman Dorance, Councilmember Bangston, thank you for having me. John Malachi, on behalf of the Building Industry Association of Central Ohio, I don't know whose credibility this may damage more, but I do agree with Mr. Motill in that we do have a housing issue, and it is on a regional basis. I thank Columbus for being a leader in having this meeting and tackling this zoning issue today and tackling it in the near term. I want you to know that our organization is working proactively with suburban and exurban communities to tell them that this is not just a Columbus housing issue. This is a regional issue that impacts us all. But Columbus is the leader in the region, and it's important that we're here today. We've talked about the lack of inventory in the region and what that has done as it relates to housing. I've got a number for you. For every $1,000 that a home increases in Central Ohio, 1,000 people are priced out of buying that house. $1,000 increase, 1,000 people are unable to qualify for that loan. Currently, projections show that within the city of Columbus, only about 43% of our residents can afford to buy a home today. We have an inventory issue. And yes, even building market-rate housing helps housing affordability at all levels. Studies have shown this over and over again. Another number for you. As housing costs, we deal with rising challenges in construction costs. Current lumber costs have increased $19,000 over the past few months. That equates to $75 approximately per month on a rental home. Most people do not have that ability to absorb that extra $75 every month. So it's important we do everything that we can to improve processes and to make sure that those homes that are approved can get built as expediently as possible. The current process and code is expensive, and it is a barrier. It's a barrier to affordability, and it's a barrier to entry into the market for new developers who you typically don't see here on Monday nights. By updating the code and by updating process, I think you'll launch a new generation of entrepreneurs who will develop their own communities where they live, which is not an option that's currently available. Speed is urgent. We have the ability to have learned from multiple other municipalities across the country who have tackled zoning updates. Mr. Wheeler has done a fantastic job of presenting that. We have an opportunity to learn from them, but it's urgent we act quickly. The quicker we can act with process improvements, the quicker we can act with potential changes that we know need to be made, the sooner we can go ahead and begin to meet the needs of our city today. I thank you for the opportunity to speak here. Our industry, our members, are eager to be a partner. Our industry, our members, are eager to be a partner and to work with the community, to work with the area commissions, to work with everyone to get to good processes that work for everyone. And I'll leave you with this, for every single-family home that's built in our community, two-point-nine jobs are sustained for one year. For every apartment that's built in our community, one-point-five jobs are sustained for a year. Homes are where jobs go to at night, construction jobs are here, we can build our city together. Thank you.
Thank you, John, I appreciate you being here.
Absolutely.
Our final public speaker tonight is Mr. Yarmer Steiner, who I believe is joining us virtually.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah. Chairman and councilmembers, thank you for having me, and after, I'm humbled speaking after everybody else, because they pretty much said everything I wanted to say, but I'm here as the Chair for Mission Advancement of the Urban Land Institute, and, and I will make just simply two points, and again, repeating some of the things that were told, said before. I want to emphasize that land use policies that you are implementing are one of the most important things that we, you can do. Fixing the potholes on the freeways, or negotiating the union contract for the police, or, you know, worrying about snow removal is not as important as land use policies where our children, our grandchildren are going to benefit from. It's really essential. Other than the fiscal policies of the city, these are the most lasting decisions. You see how we are paying today for decisions made sixty years ago still, you know, on land use policies, so it's very, very important. And, and the fact that, you know, you are paying attention to it, you know, we really appreciate it, and I'm going to simply say that please simplify, make it predictable. I mean, everything Mr. Wheeler said, Mr. Malkai said, I mean, we thought we support this, because right now, the way the system is, we are making, we have supply constraints because of the system we have, and those supply constraints cost us money, increase the cost of housing, always hurting the bottom of the ladder. And, and at the same time then, we are spending other taxpayers' money to try to compensate for the cost increases created by our system. So we need to rebuild the system instead of creating challenges and then going back and undoing them to make it more affordable. And also importance of allowing young developers in their own neighborhoods to be able to do their own projects without having to hire all those consultants to be able to navigate the system. The second thing I would like to say, and that's delicate, the way I'm going to put it, and I'm not really diplomatic, and, you know, most of the councilmembers know me, is that urban planning cannot be a, a popular democratic process, that is, that you don't plan by raising hands. Some of you know, my son's in the Navy. On an aircraft carrier, we don't ask the sailors, you know, where we, who we are going to fight today. And it's very important that the decision made about land use are objective and based on facts and based on needs. Like, for example, you know, we know that, I mean, density, not density at any cost, but an overall region who is denser is fiscally more responsible, is environmentally more efficient, reduces driving times and so forth. That has to be taken in account. The changing demographics, the needs mentioned by earlier speaker for smaller units, for tiny homes, twelve-hundred-square-foot home, quadruplexes, ADUs, all those things have to be taken into account as we are writing the zoning for the future. So, I, I, I mean, I really appreciate the direction in which we are going, and please move as fast as you can, because the present situation continues the injustices from inclusion to increased costs that we need to terminate. And, and I really appreciate Mr. Wheeler's in charge of this, and, and I hope that we'll be able to come to a new zoning code within a year or so, because it can be done fast. I mean, and there are many resources available to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner, for joining us here tonight and for your testimony. That is the last public speaker we have for tonight, so I want to close out this hearing, but I want to thank all the members of the public that tuned in, that joined us here tonight, folks that testified. This is an ongoing conversation about, well, what currently our structures are in place, but also, just as importantly, what happens in the future. My door is always open to, whether it's area commissioners, applicants, anybody else, about suggestions that we can work on to make this process as transparent and equitable for our city as we possibly can. Appreciate all of our presenters here tonight for taking time on a Wednesday to, sometimes people feel like this topic is, is not as eye-popping as some of the other things that happen, but as Mr. Steiner said, this is literally one of the most important things we can do as a community when you think about what land use policy means, whether or not that's in the historical context, or whether or not that's in the future or today. So, want to thank my colleagues in council for being here tonight. Again, we, we have these pieces of legislation come before us every Monday night, but it's rare for us to step back and have more of a policy discussion with the community, and I think it's important to acknowledge that this council is very interested in those things, and I think as Councilmember Faver pointed out, addressing some of these things in a holistic way, and, and one of our area commissioners was here, was here tonight, talking about how different committees on council relate to zoning, it's just not on its own. So appreciate my, my colleagues being here tonight to work on this work with me. Want to thank our staff, Andrew Dyer, Annie McDonald, Kevin McCain, James Lewis, Mark Carter, the Clerk's Office, the team at CTV for putting this together. This, as I said, will be an ongoing discussion, but if folks want to get ahold of me, the easiest way is my email, which is radorns@columbus.gov, whether or not it's on this topic or any other that involves council. So, thank you to everyone for your time and attention tonight, and I hope everyone has a good evening, and with that, this hearing is adjourned. Next.